Yes, Jill.
Okay, I have three. First, I would like to move up the Montessori so Beth doesn't have to sit through a whole bunch of reports, although she might find it interesting, but at least we can get best business done. So that's my first suggestion to move up Beth in our agenda.
Okay, committee, are we okay with that?
Yes.
Great, we will move up Beth.
Okay, the second one is I noticed on the email from the Wellfleet Bike and Walking Committee that they would like a response from various committees by February 10th. So somewhere in the agenda, if we could respond to the inquiry of, so the Wellfleet Bike and Walking Committee, you know, we all received an email about that.
Yes. So I was thinking if people would like to speak to that, that they might use their member speak time for that.
Okay. And the third thing, and I'm not quite sure either where to put this, but I did notice we have a joint school committee meeting on Thursday about the superintendent search and it's, and it's my guess that by the time we have our next meeting, that it might not be timely as far as us talking about who might want to be a rep on that, on the subcommittee to look for a superintendent. So, because we have our meeting now, and that meeting is just two days later. So I'm wondering whether we can put on the agenda to have a brief talk about the superintendent search.
So thank you for that. And I think I'm going to ask Tom to address that as far as he can in his report today. Does that seem fair of Tom?
Yes, yes, I plan to.
Okay, okay, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so we'll move on to Chair's report. And I would just very briefly, just want to react to the Tom's announcement the other night at the joint that he would be retiring in June. Just very briefly, because I'm sure we'll have multiple opportunities to tell him how great he is. But our loss will definitely be your family's gain, and I applaud you for such an admirable retirement goal to go be with your family. But I just also wanted to note that how lucky we have been to be in your presence and work with such a dynamic leader, one who reaches out beyond his own ideas, listens to all stakeholders, has a drive to move forward with initiatives, even as our district experiences success, and has worked on such an important school building project with barely being able to breathe, just saying it very crudely, sorry, but just the enormous amount of time that has gone into that. And so I just feel like I can speak for the board right now that you will have our support as we work together to keep the district moving forward. I believe that everything you do has a broader plan and vision around it. And so you, I believe that you'll have our support as we move in that direction.
So certainly, thank you very, very much. Beautiful words. And, you know, 29 years is a long time. And, but I must tell you, I have loved every moment of this. I want you to know that I am not leaving because of the pandemic or anything else. It's, I actually like solving problems. I find it challenging. And, but it is, it is time for me to have dinner with my wife, as I've said, and see my grandchildren far more than at times I saw my own children and, and, and not have to worry about where, where am I going to find 15 minutes to do something else. So it's all great. And I have loved our relationship. You're absolutely focused on the right things, making sure that every child is chasing their dream. And good for you and keep it up. And you're making a difference in kids' lives. So thank you very much. That's it.
Okay, we're going to move on to members speak.
I can say that I did read the report from the biking committee, and I, I was impressed. I didn't find it terribly specific, but I liked the ideas and I liked the priorities that they put forth. I don't have any changes to make or any questions on it at this point, but it seems as though they're taking an awful lot of ideas from all kinds of directions and putting them together. And I appreciate that.
Great. Are there any other members who wish to speak? Jill?
Yes, just to piggyback on Martha, you know, I applaud their efforts and trying to have something that works. As a school committee, I don't feel that we can make a broad statement because that is not our roles, that doesn't fall within our umbrella of roles and responsibilities. However, as individuals, we can certainly follow through and, you know, give personal feedback, whether it's very much applauding what they're doing, their intentions, or, or concerns.
Thank you, Jill. Any other members speak? Okay, I'm going to move on to citizens speak. And hearing none, I do want to welcome our teacher members, Susan Deshawn, Lee Miller, and Claudia Coe. So glad to have you with us tonight. We will move on to priority business, but we have adjusted our agenda to allow Beth Forster to request from the Wellfleet Montessori preschool. So Beth, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Hello, everybody. So back again. It's good to see everybody's faces, I must say. And yeah, we just would love to have the space again for the 2001, 2002, 2021, 2022 here. And we also would like to see if we could do the summer camp. Last year, we weren't able to do it because of COVID. And we're hoping that this year we can offer that as well. So that's what we're putting on the table.
Okay, discussion from members, questions? Do we want to fill Laura in a little bit?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, well, I know what the Montessori is, but summer camp, what?
Yes. So the summer camp would just be to, because we feel that that age group is really hard for families to find camps. And so we're trying to, you know, help the community and support families that need it in that age group. It's pretty much
That'd be great.
Yeah, so
You have my full support. Can I register too?
A lot of the families are like, yes, please, please. And yeah, last year, it just couldn't work out because of various, you know, obvious reasons. But, but this year, we're hoping, you know, that we could continue. I don't know what the numbers are going to be, but, but yeah, we'll use the playground and be in the classroom and, you know, just make it as fun as possible and lots of water and lots of shade. So yeah, we're good.
Martha?
Yeah, I just want to check in with Mary Beth before we say yes and make sure she doesn't have any plans, you know, a ballroom or, you know, like, an extra classroom for me, whatever, you know.
Thank you, Martha. No, I think it's wonderful if we can provide that level of service for our youngest community members. Absolutely. We'll just have to see what is happening with COVID and what the protocols are going to be. But if everything works out well, I would love to have that, and I welcome it.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll take a motion then, unless there's other discussion. Martha?
I seem to be the only one unmuted. Oh, no, Lori, you can second it.
Yeah.
I moved to allow the Wellfleet Montessori preschool to continue to use our space for this school year, 2021, 2022, and for the summer program.
Jill Plutn, second? Oh, give it to Laura.
Thank you.
All in favor then? We'll just do roll call vote. Jill, can you see everybody, Arlen, if we just raise our hands? Is that an okay manner?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. I can see you.
So hands in if you're voting to approve.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Good to see you all.
Okay, we continue to enjoy the relationship we have with you guys. So thanks for coming. All right, I'm going to move us on to administrator reports, and we'll hear from Mary Beth.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for voting to approve via email, the Pennies for Presidents. So a spirit or theme committee was created within the building. And Mr. Miller is on it, Mrs. DeSantis, Mrs. Kassaba, I believe Mrs. Anderson, and Mr. Miller is on tonight. So if I missed anybody, he can jump on to, to let us know. But the first kickoff event was this pennies for presidents. And so it coincided with President's Day coming up on Monday, of course, that's part of vacation week. Lincoln's birthday is February 12. And so they thought, well, why don't we kick this off with pennies being Lincoln's birthday, and that the money that is raised, the pennies that we collect, would then in turn be given to common table. So it would be going back into the community, supporting our community members who are relying on support when it comes to food and meals. So we kicked it off yesterday, and I wanted to show you a picture. I dressed as Lincoln as best I could. I decorated a little card and our little jar that the pennies are going in. And Mrs. DeSantis, along with one of our preferred subs, Mrs. Hayes, they cut 300 pink and red hearts, and they placed positive words on there. So as students put pennies in, they get a heart. And then at some point during the day, the class goes down to the lobby, and there are three big hearts that are posted in the lobby. And so they're able to tape their heart that has a kind word there. So this just gives you an idea of what's happening around eight o'clock every morning. I don't know if you can see it. And so there's Emmy there, and her heart actually says kindness on it. So, so it's been a fun event. And now the committee is working on Read Across America Week and Dr. Seuss's birthday. The other thing is that Mr. McHugh, our head custodian, has announced his retirement. So we're sad to see him go. We're very happy for him. I believe this is his 14th year at Wellfleet Elementary School. And we did post, currently, we have three candidates. I have scheduled two out of the three. We have a few staff members who would like to be on the interview committee. I asked anyone else that's interested to please let me know by Thursday. So interviews will begin the week after vacation. And I'm hoping that the candidate is able to start June 14. And then that way, it provides two weeks to shadow with Mr. McHugh before he retires at the end of the month. And I think that's all I have. In addition, are there any questions?
Okay, I'm not seeing it.
Thank you.
Mary Beth?
Thank you.
Can I just ask you to repeat what month he's going to retire in?
He's retiring July 1.
Oh, July 1, okay.
The new candidate hopefully will be able to start June 14 for that shadowing period.
Okay, thanks. Sure. All right, we'll move on to Tom Superintendent's report.
So let me jump into the quick calling for a joint school committee meeting and understand what's happening that would motivate the meeting to take place so, so soon. So in the superintendent's contract, one of the, one of the clauses of my current contract requires me to make sure that I've given at least 180 days notice if I plan to, in this case, retire, which I did, and then some. And, and what's happened is that there has been some conversations relative to how do we begin to get this organized? How do we begin to look at the pieces from the past search and so forth? And in having some conversation with, remember, I belong to the Superintendent's Association, and Tom Scott is our leader and so forth, it's, it's quite apparent that even at almost 200 days to do the process, there are others who have jumped out even faster than that to secure the filling of certain superintendent positions. And so there is some concern that some, some, some candidates have already been chosen for next year's positions at the superintendent's level. And there is knowledge that at least, it looks like there are going to be at least 35 openings for superintendents next year at this time. And so there is, people are wondering if we should, of course, have this meeting and have a conversation about the strategy or discussion about what will be the best way to move forward in terms of getting the best candidate, and, and what other options that might, might have to be considered going forward. So the thought was to try to get on this as soon as possible, because the clock is ticking. And, and we have February vacation next week. And only because I'm also focused so much on the building project, I can tell you that, that gobbles up almost the rest of February. So when we come back, it's already the first of March. And, and so I think the head of the union, of the Union 54 and the region would like to have a conversation with, with everybody from all the school committees. So that's, that's what it's about. And it's actually because of the quickness of this meeting, it's bumped out the region meeting, which was typically going to be at six o'clock tomorrow. And the region will be backed up until seven o'clock before they start their meeting to allow this meeting to take place. So that's, that's where the concern is. It isn't necessarily about whether or not we're going to have somebody from each of the school committees. That would be automatic, I think, going forward. That's fairly easy to allow each of the boards to decide who they want to represent them in this process. But as I've, I've tried to tell you, I can only tell you so much, but obviously, this concern about what you're going to be looking for in terms of your search, and there are a couple of options that you need to, need to consider in terms of this meeting. So, so if you want to ask a couple of questions, I'll see if I can answer them or not. But, but go ahead.
Laura Bagetti first?
I just want to make sure, is the meeting joint school tomorrow or Thursday?
It's actually Thursday.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all.
And Jill?
Yes, when it was announced at the end of the joint school committee meeting, I was concerned about time and deadlines as well. And once again, and I know that possibly this might not be able to be answered, I know in the past, mask mass assisted in a superintendent church, search, and again, concerned about time. And, you know, we're having our school committee meeting now. I'm wondering whether, of course, you know, when it's time for future agenda suggestions, I will certainly put superintendent search down there. But again, I was wondering whether we're going to have enough time before, after that meeting on Thursday to select a representative if we need to. Or, you know, would this be able to wait until the second Tuesday of March?
Yeah. So I think, two things, Jill, thank you. I think those are, those are excellent points. If indeed, and we usually have great attendance at the joint meetings, if indeed, we are able to, this is really one question that's really critical for, I think, for the boards to come to agreement on, is if everyone is there, quite possibly, I could see that you could possibly sit amongst yourselves and decide, take some time to even decide who you want to be on, on, on the search committee. If I understand it right, Jill, I think last time, we had one representative from each of the elementary schools and two from the region. And so that would be, I think everybody would think that that's probably the logical way to go again. It worked, worked last time. So we'll have to see. And this is really a, some leadership from Chris Easley, of course, and Gail, although I think Gail is going to be stepping aside. She has something else that's taking her place, and Mara will be speaking to it. So, so you're right, time is of essence. Anything else I can help on that?
I'm seeing Martha.
Sorry, my dog is barking. I had two questions. One of them was, I'm wondering, Tom, if anybody talked about perhaps waiting a year and having an interim superintendent, or would we lose too much momentum? I'm just agreeing that it takes such a long time, and we're in such an odd place out here. We're so far, and there are all kinds of issues around housing. It may take us a long time. I can't imagine anybody filling your shoes to begin with. So, you know, that is something. And I also wonder if we have this conversation, I wonder if it, if it's possible legally for us to just, if anyone's interested in being on the search committee, to just shoot Betsy an email. And if there's one person or no people, it's, that will be very different from if all of us want to be on it.
Sure, sure.
Might be an easier way to do it. I don't know what people think about that.
So Martha, you, you, you hit the bullseye in terms of the potential conversation that's going to take place tomorrow night. And so you've really described one approach, and I think you've all been familiar with the other approach of how you've hired a superintendent. So I can't tell you much more than that of giving, you know, but that's the conversation that people want to, want to make sure they hear from everybody about. If you know what I'm saying.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying, so.
I usually can't hit the side of a barn, so it's nice.
So that's
Oh, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, that's, that's the importance of what the focus will be going forward in the process.
Thank you.
And Jill?
Back to, if we need representatives, I feel differently. As far as I feel that, you know, if there's two people who are interested, you know, to have a discussion about it instead of emailing Betsy, that's why I was bringing it up for while we're all together, you know. But from what I hear Tom saying, it appears that we could have that time if we need to have a discussion on Thursday. But I think, again, you know, if two people are interested, if three people are interested, and they all write to Betsy, then what?
Yeah. So So certainly, I think that if, if we have five members from the committee there at the joint, that you can have a meaningful opportunity to have a conversation about who comes forward from, from the group, right? Ideally, I'd like to see everybody have a say in it. And depending upon the attendance, it will tell us who can do that and who can't. So.
So we can't have the conversation right now, is that?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
And I think, I think you need to, you need to look at the issue that's been, that Martha has raised and Jill have raised of, of, of the approaches to the search. Once you understand that, each of, each of the two options are different, totally different in terms of your focus. It doesn't change the fact that you're going to have members involved in both processes. It's just that people might look at it a little bit differently depending upon that choice. So. The other piece of it, I guess, just to give it the other part is typically, you have in the past, you have, there are five identified, identified groups that would lead the, guide the process. And you'll hear about that tomorrow night as well, in terms of the potential of bringing outside groups that run the process for you, assist you, guide you, and so forth. That will be discussed as well tomorrow night. So. Okay, everybody all right with that?
Looks like we're good.
Okay, so let me just, I just, I'm sorry, I'll just take a little bit of time going forward. I plan next meeting to have our budget public hearing. And we can take some time if you have more questions about the budget, although it, you know, as always, Mary Beth, I think, has done a wonderful job again. Yeah, I know, I saw a lot of smiles last time when she did her report. She is in a class by herself. And, and so I'll plan to build into it the public hearing so we can get into the budget again and make sure that we'll have, have the hearing and then hopefully be able to sign off on this budget going to the town. So thank you for that. I, I also wanted to mention that the high school building project, I think a couple of you probably know about it. I hope everybody, of course, is, we're now running informational Zoom meetings on Wednesdays at 6:30. And they're going to be every Wednesday down to the election. And that will be, each, each night will be a 15-minute focus on something about the project. And so this, this Wednesday night will be about the various options that were considered in the building project, so that you could see the depth of discussion about all kinds of different ideas and how we got to the selection we did. And then there should be around 45 to 50 minutes of, of time for people to ask any questions they want, whether it's about that topic or anything else with, with the program. I'm pleased to tell you, last night, I was in Brewster to board a selectman meeting, and the selectman voted for one to support the high school building project. And that's great news for us. And we're very excited to have that support from Brewster Selectment. And, and we move forward from there. Uh, I'm going to be speaking about school choice as a topic here, so I'll wait for that, that moment. But anything else that I can answer or questions you have for me? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're on the FY '21 Budget Expenditure Report. So that's Giovanna.
Thank you. Let's go directly to page 12 of the report, please. The prior month balance was $112,034. We spent or encumbered since last month's reporting $8,569, leaving a balance of $103,465. We still have additional expenses that need to be reclassified to school choice, totally $20,000. So if you add that in, we have a balance of $123,465. I'm going to identify the line items that had more than $1,000 of movement since last month's activity. So starting on page one of the report towards the middle of the page, line item 4010, the other principal expense, we spent or encumbered $1,520, and that is due to some legal expenses that were incurred. Moving on to page eight of the report, at the top of the page, line item 4045, regular day transportation. We received final billing from the collaborative with a small adjustment of $4,188 since last month's reporting. And that is my report. Any questions?
All right, seeing none. Thank you, Giovanna. It's nice to have a year where we're in good shape, even though we thought we weren't going to be.
Yes, we are.
Okay, so we're on to school choice then.
Okay, so let me, let me talk about our smaller elementary schools. I know that Wellfleet, of course, we've, we've dabbled with some school choice and, and relative to what happens, for instance, I remember we were talking about two, taking in two first graders in the program. And in, in late spring, you vote to have choice or, or not involve yourself in choice. That happens, it is supposed to happen in every school in the Commonwealth. And they are identifying each year whether or not they're going to participate in the choice program or not. In the case of, of bringing two students in a couple of years ago, go, we, by bringing them in, we receive $5,000, in the neighborhood of $5,000 for each student. In this case, two students equals $10,000. And you bring that in as a revenue and you're able to use that in the program going forward. The, the interesting piece and, and, and when we get away from our smaller schools and you get into the, to, to the region, that's a whole nother issue. And I think it's, it's rarely been an issue throughout the process of talking about this building project. And I'll make it brief. I'll try, I'll try to hit some of the highlights to think about, and then I'll open it up and you can take me where you want on choice. Choice was really, you know, 20, 24, 25 years ago, we got into choice. And I had just come into the district and at that time we were losing a number of students out of the middle school. They actually were going to Chatham Middle School. There was concern also during some of that time, we saw the discussion about the Lighthouse Charter School coming forward and, and eventually which happened. And so there was concern that Nauset was on somewhat of the losing end of, of choice, that more kids were going out that, than were coming in. And that's what initially got Nauset into the choice program. And it was decided since the high school was certainly holding on to its students at that time that we should begin to move forward with choice at the high school. And as I remember it, we started with four seats. One in each grade. The board approved four seats and we got our four seats. That was $20,000. And over time, the choice numbers have grown to be a fairly substantial number. I can tell you that we currently have a, a, a number of, we started the year certainly with 60 students at the middle school. And over all of the sections that we build, both in the sixth and the seventh and the eighth grades, we believe at, at, at the level we're at, that we're not spending any additional dollars because of choice, that we have the seats available by grade for students to be in the program and, and not, when we don't need additional teachers or really resources. At the high school, we're just under 200 students. And we see it something along those lines and moving pretty fast for you. And that, that number obviously started at four and continued to grow and grow and grow as we grew. And, and we being the high school. And we believe that through the choice program, it brings in a great deal of diversity. And it gives us the opportunity to have a richer academic and, and co-curricular program because of the numbers of students that we have. So let's just look at the high school at this point, because that's where a lot of focus is. If you were a student at Nauset Regional High School and we were in the situation of having choice throughout the program, we believe that when a student comes onto campus, let's say it's a choice student, and, and when they go by the principal, we aren't going to increase the number of principals we have just because you're choice or you're a regional student. When you go into a classroom and you turn on the lights, the lights are going to be on in that classroom all day long. Now typically, we have somewhere between 12 and 13 students in that classroom. We might have, on average, two or three students from the choice program and possibly one on average from the Truro and P-Town tuition agreement. But the lights are going to be on whether we're in choice or we're not. The heat is going to go on whether we have choice or not. And that teacher who's teaching 14 students, 15 students, 18 students probably at, at its highest levels, no matter if they're choice or they're region students, we're going to have one teacher teaching. And so we readily admit, because of the number of students that we have, that we need 6.5 additional teachers to cover sections because of the numbers of choice students in our system. So we think that that number looks something around $650,000. And we're bringing in somewhere in the neighborhood of just over $1.7 million with school choice monies. So you can see when you do the math pretty quickly. We believe that it is a plus for us financially. We think it's a plus for us in terms of the ability to have greater diversity and certainly the ability to offer more and a wider swath of courses for all students. And that benefits the regional students and it benefits the students who come in under school choice. So let me stop there and, and refocus or help anybody in terms of understanding that. Anyone?
Martha?
Yeah, Tom, thank you for that. There was an article in the Independent that sort of said that. I, I fear that the article was not written very clearly. I shared it with a couple of people and they couldn't make heads or tails out of it. And your explanation is, was so clear and so much. Everybody has to hear this one way or another because
Right.
there are so many misconceptions about school choice.
So we just did, thank you Martha very much. We just did a TV show. We're doing the superintendent spotlight every Friday. And we used that over the summer and we had great, great numbers watching. And we're definitely able to push it out through parents square to everyone. And we just did a half hour show going even deeper into that, that explanation. We get deeper into the program and we also get deeper in the results of the, of the efforts of that school, which, which resulted in, in Nauset Regional High School being a national blue ribbon high school. It's received the compass, Massachusetts compass award, the Vanguard Award of Excellence and US News and World Report many, many times and just recently in the top 25, 24, I think, in the US News and World Report, as well as the district being recognized as one of the best for, for programs. So it's critical that people understand that there is a balance to this and it's, it's nowhere near as bad as some of the opponents make it sound. And, you know, there are some crazy numbers about how you can possibly save $4 million by getting rid of it. It's, 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 it's just not true. And the numbers I've shared with you are accurate and they, and they reflect what's currently happening in the system. And it's, it's, it's the truth. So.
Martha?
The, the programs that you air are excellent. My fear is the people who are misunderstanding are not parents, but people of a certain age perhaps in some towns in the district. And I wonder if there's a way for somebody in the administration, and I'm happy to edit it, to write a letter to the editor, say, of the Cape Cod Times or offer to do an editorial or something. So everybody's reading it.
That would be wonderful. That would be wonderful. And I'd be glad to connect you with a couple of people who could, could work with you directly on that, Martha.
I'm not sure I'm allowed to write it, but I can edit it.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Anyone else?
Jan?
Um, Tom, it's so, I mean, to me, it's, it's so vital and, and so part of what we are that I just always find it difficult to believe that people don't understand. However, I'd like to understand a little bit more about what we're doing at Wes and what has happened with our two. And have they stayed? And have we done a second two and so forth? Because I'm not quite up on that.
So Mary Beth, can you help, help us here?
Yes.
That'd be great. Thank you.
The two that we had originally had been Wellfleet Elementary students in K. They had moved out of the district when we had offered school choice for the first time and they were the two that applied. And so there was no break. There was continuity to their education. When we had offered school choice in the spring for this current year, nobody came because of the pandemic.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so we'll offer two again at kindergarten or?
No, I think kindergarten, we're going to be upwards of 17 incoming students. If we were going to consider it again, I would look at the incoming grade two kids because those would have been the kiddos this year had we retained two.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura?
I just, is, is, so it's an application based process?
Yes, it is, Laura. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And, and we'll announce when the applications, depending upon which schools are involved. You, you, as, as you, you're hearing that the, the school committee will declare how many seats and at what grades they're open for. And then you're taking applications for those. And so if, if, if we took the second grade example and we put out and we got, we are only going to ask for two seats and five young students apply for that, we would put them in and we would have to pull names and, and then make our choice that way. It has nothing to do with who gets the application in first. It, it, it's the number of students. And that's how it works.
Mary Beth?
And also typically, the district does not provide transportation. That becomes the onus of the parent.
So as I look at the, just our report from this week, it's that class size of 12 that we would be hoping to add to for next year as second graders.
Mary Beth?
Hi, Beth.
I, I just caution at this point because we're not quite sure what the pandemic is going to look like come the fall. And if we still have our memorandum of agreement that students are six feet apart, I would not be able to add to that class or any other at this point.
Okay.
So we'll take up the, the conversation will be on the agenda here soon at one of the meetings and we'll figure it out what we want to do.
Okay.
I do want to say.
At this point.
I know you want a robust understanding of some of the, the subjects. I want you to know that we're very happy to, to have the Truro and Provincetown students in our system. And we are, we were in a position because I, I was involved at the negotiations for the, the contract, and that has been beat up pretty good at times as well. And you need to understand that the tuition number that we're talking about, although that's the only number people want to bring up, is that Truro and Provincetown provide their own transportation and transportation is expensive. So we don't run buses into Truro. We don't run buses into Provincetown. They are responsible. So you have to take that number out of there and add it to the, the agreed upon tuition rate. The other piece of it is special education. And in both communities within the language is a great deal of, of possibilities of the funding by these two towns. For instance, if you, if we, we had to pick up an ed assistant for a student, we don't pay for that. The sending district does. So between the special education savings that we would have if it was on our dime and the transportation, it is far greater in terms of value than what a lot of people want to say it is. The other piece is that we have had conversations about the possibility of joining the region. That has come up the last two negotiations. We had talked about the possibility at some point of continuing to have conversation about it going forward. And, and again, to some of our critics, I would say, remember, these are negotiations. We are in no position to dictate what Truro and Provincetown have to do. So I hope that's helpful for you as well.
Okay, thank you. I think we're ready to move on to our FY22 proposed budget discussion.
Okay, so Gio, I just want to, I just want to, and I kind of let it out of the, out of the bag earlier, but we, we do plan to go to that public hearing. And if there are any issues here that you want us to be working on before we get to that, and we're more than glad to make sure we're prepared to bring that to the next meeting, although it was a very successful discussion the last time. Gio, anything, anything else you want to add to the 22 budget discussion?
No, not at this time.
Okay, Mary Beth?
I just wanted to, if I could, Tom, is just say that I'm not reducing the budget as a result of Paul McHugh's retirement. I want to be able to hire the very best person for this particular job. There are a lot of different pieces to the puzzle when it comes to building maintenance and understanding all the intricacies. And it's quite sophisticated. We have a lot of big ticket items on our capital improvement plan over the next few years. And so we really need a qualified person. So I do not want to touch that line item for salary.
Makes a lot of sense.
Jan?
And we do have to add a little bit for the substitutes.
That's exactly right. And we'll have that number for you, Jan, when we, when we introduce that. We have to do that in all the budgets.
Right. But that won't affect the bottom line here. Is that correct?
I don't think so.
Mary Beth?
I don't think so either. I had added money into about $3,600 into substitute for anticipating if people were out with COVID related illness. And that has not happened. So I feel comfortable that that sort of buffer, if you will, is in there.
Excellent.
For the increase. Yes. Thank you. For the increase, yes. Thank you.
Just while we're on that subject, I believe the vote was, wasn't it to start now? So anybody who's hired from now on, and, and Jevana, pardon me for not asking during this review, but we are just confirming that we're in good shape for this year?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else about the budget? FY22 in preparation for our public hearing? See what happens when you do your homework, Mary Beth? Okay, so that means we move on to reports and information. So I'll start with Jill and the collaborative.
The collaborative had a meeting on January 13th and will have a meeting tomorrow. Ongoing transportation has been an issue. Efforts for having effective drivers, recruitment and retention. And once again, all the multifactorial issues of between COVID and the ups and downs of things changing on a dime as far as school attendance, school open, online, athletics and so on. As most of you know, I sent you an email and you're all getting other emails about the legislative breakfast is on Friday. Supply your own breakfast if you're coming. It always in the past, it's really wonderful to have informed and communicating and connecting with our legislators. Waypoint location continues to be sought out as well as since the Director of Education is retiring as well in June, that, you know, what should be restructured? Should anything be restructured? That goes on. Professional inter-district collaboration, professional development's going strong. Apparently, there's week, weekly curriculum administrator meetings that are supposed to be quite fruitful and productive. There has been a lot of discussion and looking into how can staff of all the districts, what can be done for supporting them? Also, in the inf, in the aftermath of COVID and the trauma and the consequences, whether it's learning gaps or social, emotional, professional development is being quite honed in on how can the collaborative support staff as far as resources and future resources? That's it.
All right, questions for Jill? Thank you, Jill. I know how meaty those meetings are and the way you summarize. I'm sure it's quite tricky work. Preschool enrollment, I did not see a report. Did you guys in your? Okay.
I, I actually didn't receive one this month. I'll get it to you. Well, I haven't received it yet. So I can email it to you when I do. Okay?
Thank you so much. All right. No PTA that I am aware of. And so that brings us to strategic planning. Anything there, Martha?
Not really. I, I am just so pleased about the two new positions. And it feels as though people are taking all that work so seriously. And it's not going to be one of these books that's just one of these big binders sitting on a shelf somewhere. I'm, I'm really excited, so.
Yeah.
It's great.
Great. And what about behavioral health task force? Anything for us there?
Actually, we spent quite a bit of time discussing, still discussing of mostly the most asked, at-risk kids we have in terms of behavioral health and the kids that are really needing tier-one support and the kinds of things that are happening in the middle school and high school right now. That seems to be what the focus is of the group. When kids are transitioning back to school, either from hospitalizations or trans, transitioning back after COVID, what kinds of supports are in place now for these kids? To say nothing of the staff. But trying to figure out how to communicate with families and what kinds of evaluations are needed for the, our kids who are most severely at risk. Making sure that every kid who comes back to the school, especially after a hospitalization or some other big event, has a point person providing mini groups for kids who are really at risk. Checking in with staff, having the school adjustment counselors and the guidance staff and the school psychologist always, and the nurse, always checking in with staff to see if they notice anything. As I said before, it's really difficult when kids are in school only half-time. You know, it's, it's, or, or all of, some of them are remote all the time. And how to, how to really key in on the kids who are struggling and everybody's struggling more now. We decided that we, our goal is really to create resources for kids, especially in transition years, like going from fifth grade into sixth grade, going from kindergarten into first grade. Probably at the elementary school almost every year is sort of a, a pretty big transition year for kids. But especially in those years, going into ninth grade from the middle school and also being able to support families as they're going through those kinds of things. There's also, we have to be aware that there are kids with, I guess the best way is to call it invisible disabilities, kids that are wearing the weight of their family situations on their shoulders. And how, what kinds of programs can we help? How can we help those kids and how can we help those families? But we don't always see it, you know, even teachers in the classroom don't always see that kind of thing, especially as kids get older. They're really good at putting their game faces on. We decided as well that we wanted to spend most of, a lot more of our time talking about not only addictive behavior with our students, but students who are dealing with families, those kinds of problems within their families and, and how we can help those kids. Because that's something we, we really haven't spent a lot of time on in the past and we really want to focus on that. And basically, as, as we're finding everywhere, and when we talk about school council, we'll talk a little bit about that too. Making sure that the social, emotional curriculum that's being developed, that has been developed, is continuing to be developed, that part of the strategic plan is actually embedded in the, the whole curriculum, that it's not just, you know, oh, it's Thursday, we're going to have social educational learning now. But more part of everything else. I think that's it.
Martha, I just thought of something when you were speaking. And I'm just wondering if your committee spends time thinking sort of forward about when everybody eventually is allowed to be together in school again? You know, I'm just thinking about especially high school kids and middle school kids. If they have been remote and then they're going back to be with their friends, with kids their age. I mean, they might have sort of let friendships drop and all that. And I'm just wondering if that's part of what you might discuss at that?
Absolutely. That's, I mean, talk about a big transition.
Yeah.
It's going to be huge for everybody and absolutely. It's, it is. It's going to be an interesting time.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Wellness Subcommittee. Anything to report there? Yes, Tom?
Thank you. So this is an interesting story. Fascinating. So Bonnie Hartung, Rick Peters and Keith Kenyon, the interim principal at the middle school, were working on with some parent groups on air purifiers. And they got the idea of possibly going to Desi. So they, they make a contact at Desi and tell them that they're concerned about, you know, the, getting some of these and there's no money and things like this. And before it's done, this gentleman they were dealing with said, call back in another week and let me look into this and so forth. He indicates at that time that he can provide 100 air purifiers for the, for the, for the, for the region. So Keith Kenyon then says, well, we got all kinds of school districts in our, in our, in our system. And we would like to, to include all our elementary schools. So when it's all said and done, we have, through their efforts, 250 free air purifiers, we think coming tomorrow.
Wow.
And so and I know Claudia's been around it because the nurses have been looking at the, the, the issue of this, you know, air purifiers and so forth. So through their efforts, we're going to, and I talked to Mary Beth today and we know we're going to send at least 15, if not maybe 20 up to, up to Wes for this school. So that's a pretty good story, huh?
That's a good story.
So we're looking for the truck tomorrow and we'll get some up for you, Mary Beth, within a day or two after. So, thank you.
Awesome. No scheduled for tomorrow, I hope. Housing task force.
Oh, yeah.
Janja?
Yeah, I thought I should let you know about this because it does impact the school to a great extent. I am a member of this group because of being on the school committee. And we have been meeting for, if you can believe it, almost two years to prepare an RFP that would be attractive to a developer and provide as much housing here as possible in the affordable range. Little did we think when we began that preparing a proposal for 46 rental units could possibly take so long. But we found that we started a can of worms in, in one respect. And that is, we found as we were preparing that the town of Wellfleet was not really up to par in several categories. And that this housing was a good opportunity to improve the infrastructure of our community and provide a substantive help to the developer who is going to make it possible for us to have these units. So the first thing, the first detour was water. And those of you who went to the September town meeting on the ball field found out that we passed water bill with a tremendous amount of state help. We were able to apply for a huge grant. And we have loans and we are going to have an addition to the town water supply. And it will bring water to these 46 units and also go further on Route 6 and also go to Outer Cape Hill and also up Briar Lane. So there'll be plenty of water for all of the situations in the near future. By law, we had to improve the amount of flow within the next year or two by state demand. And so by doing this, connecting it to the housing, it made this wonderful grant possible and the town meeting passed. And so that was for the housing. So then we got over that and the next thing was sewer. And you probably read in the paper about all the holdup of the rental housing up in Turo because of nitrates and how much the percentage has to be and so forth. And they were held up a long time. So we're, we thought that connecting with the committee, looking at sewers and looking at small ways of making a sewage treatment plant that that might help. And so we've written into our RFP a combination of a little house, I guess you'd call, a, a treatment plant that would serve the 46 units, but also makes sewage available to some of the houses nearby and sewage for the school, for the fire department and for the police department. So that in fact, instead of adding the nitrates to our aquifer, we would be taking them away. And that, of course, would be a big, big plus for the environment as well as putting in these new units without a damaging cost. So that's what's kept things from proceeding. But finally, finally, we have our RFP ready to go out next month in March. And then, of course, the we have to hope and pray that there's a developer or two or three that wants to come along and build this. And then, of course, the first year, they always get rejected. You know that, Tom, from school plans when you want to remodel. And so that's another year, but hopefully they will come along. And then we can go through the 40B process and you have to, of course, get all the permits from the town. So, so it's a very long story. The most affected the school would have been was that in the original plans that we talked about, we were going to suggest in the RFP that perhaps the, the leach field could be put under the ballpark. And that was something, you know, the, the baseball field would be slightly impacted for a while. But then part of it would be that they would put a top-of-the-line ball field when they finished on top of the, on top of the leach field. But, but with the sewer, if we pass that at town meeting, then that is not going to be necessary. Anyway, if you have any questions or concerns, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Jan?
No, Jan, it sounds, you're, it sounds like it's an incredible experience to be on that, that.
It is.
For you. Yeah. Thank you very much. That was a great report.
Yes, thank you for catching us up. That was great. Okay, moving to future agenda items. Yes, Jill?
A superintendent vacancy, since we don't know what sort of form we're going to be having once Tom's out. Maybe the heading would just be superintendent vacancy and then we can just go from there.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Martha?
It's not an agenda item. Did you want a school council report?
I'm sorry.
It's not on, it's actually not on the agenda, so I don't know if I can do it. And Mary, Mary Beth usually has it in her report and she did, but I also have a report if you want to hear it. I'm happy not to report. Basically, we talked about the operating budget and what was happening with the, why, why the priorities got switched. We talked about the 100th day of school being on March 2nd. We talked about the iPods going home to make sure they're working to troubleshoot in case we need them for snow days or other things. We, we worked, we worked. No, Mary Beth worked on goal four of the strategic. Um we we worked, we worked. No, Mary Beth worked on goal four of the strategic plan and filled that in and we all nodded and felt very happy that she had done that. And basically, that's what's happening. That's why I'm there's really not much work for the strategic planning committee to do at this point. I we've turned it all over to the school councils. Um and this month, we are working on um the fifth goal, which is community schools, which is my favorite. And it was um actually Tom who originally got me excited about that um back at one of our big forums. Um and what we did notice and I'm noticing at any meeting that I go to is how interconnected all of these goals are. And I certainly, we kept we kept saying that as we were developing the plan. It was um everything is embedded together and um it's 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 a pu- it's a thing of beauty.
Proud of it. What a group that was. So again, I'm done. I think I think we're done.
Okay.
We've passed it on to school council.
Okay, Mary Beth?
And I can honestly say that the draft of the updated school improvement plan, all five goals are complete. So at our next meeting, we will just be reviewing the draft to do any editing that we need to do, any word smithing, if we want to get a little more detailed, et cetera. And then it will be ready for a presentation at the June school committee meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we look forward to that, really. All right, um back to future agenda items. Okay. Looks good. So um let's think about the minutes. Did anyone um notice anything about the minutes? I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Great. Okay, all in favor, put your hand on the camera.
Yeah, got it.
Great. Um bills have been paid earlier this afternoon and so I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Very good, thank you.
All right.
We want people to write to you about the we'll we'll just talk.
Let's let's see how the joint meeting goes and we'll take steps after that.
Perfect.
That'd be good. All right. Okay, we will see you on Thursday night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.